Again, thank you for coming. Timing is going to be very tight tonight, which we're thankful for. We've got so many candidates participating and so many questions to answer. So we ask that you watch, that all the candidates watch the timer and hand over the mic at or before the beep because the next candidate's time starts immediately. So this will be a test of sharing, collaborating, and following directions. And again, we just would like everyone to get extra time and to respect the time of everyone here in attendance. Question one, and just so everyone else knows, we have one member who cannot be here tonight because of a conflict, and he sent written questions, and I'm going to read those as the first response. And then after that, Eugenia, you'll start. Okay. Question one, two and a half minutes. Please also introduce yourself as part of the answer. It's common in CPS classrooms to have a wide range of student ability, sometimes five or more grade levels between the lowest and highest performing students. What will you do to ensure that CPS meets this range of needs? So answering for Jose Luis. Good evening. I'm Jose Luis Rojas, and I'm running for reelection to the Cambridge School Committee. My family and I have lived here for nearly 25 years, and our sons have attended CRLS and Amigos. As an immigrant and someone whose parents invested everything in education, I know firsthand how transformative it can be, and I want every student in Cambridge to have those same opportunities. It's true that in CPS classrooms, we often see a wide range of abilities, sometimes several grade levels apart. Meeting that diversity of needs requires multiple strategies. First, we need strong foundations, especially in literacy and mathematics, so that students are always ready for the challenges ahead. At the same time, we must provide multiple pathways. For example, giving students the chance to take Algebra One in eighth grade while also ensuring the students who need more time get the support they need. I believe bilingual immersion programs are another way to both close opportunity gaps and challenge students at different levels. Expanding successful models like Montessori, bilingual immersion, and experiential learning can help engage students across ability ranges. We should also investigate how artificial intelligence, AI, can be used to better meet student needs. Finally, we have to use data and listen to students, parents, and educators. That means regularly monitoring the impact of policies, adjusting when needed, and making sure resources follow student needs. Every child deserves to feel both supported and challenged, no matter where they are on their learning journey.
I'm Eugenia Schraha. That's Eugenia, like Eugene, and Schraha rhymes with algebra. I'm a former public high school teacher. I taught in the Bronx, and I have two kids in our schools. Besides having been a classroom teacher, one thing that distinguishes me from in this race is my advocacy track record. For example, I successfully advocated for 170 additional after-school seats and to raise after-school teacher pay. As a candidate, I write a weekly newsletter that is already influencing policy. Local media has taken up two of my stories, one on the superintendent search and one on troubling data coming out of Fletcher Maynard. CPS claims teachers can differentiate over way more grade levels than is possible. For example, their own data showed that last school year's seventh graders were at more than six grade levels in math, with a third above grade level and 15% three grade levels or more below grade level. Yet all those kids are in the same eighth-grade class. It's the optics of equity winning over putting student learning first. With new policies, student learning should always come first, and teachers should always be engaged in implementing them. In the immediate term, school committee should push back on the claim that meeting kids where they are is unconscionable tracking. It's actually the hard, real work of equity. When we allow much-needed pull-out services in elementary schools or push-in services, all of that could equally be labeled "tracking." And in our current system, there are countless examples of secret tracking where families in the know get their kids into better classes in or outside of the schools, and the schools support this because it's a release valve that keeps parents happy. Meeting kids where they are is a necessary and a good thing. We can't trap kids in their tracks, but we actually need much more by way of flexibility. Longer term, CPS needs to invest in improving elementary math instruction. Of course, that starts with those teachers and principals involved. What are their concerns and ideas? For example, a former CPS math teacher I talked to told me of an idea that works well elsewhere, where they have elementary math specialist teachers, just like they have art and music teachers focusing just on math. Lastly, CPS has to do better about telling families when a kid is behind and making resources available within the system to get them back on track. That should be one of the key metrics that school committee uses to evaluate the superintendent.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lily Hafsted, and thank you. That's okay. My name's Lily Hafsted. Thank you for hosting to the CALA Group tonight. I am a teacher scholar. I am at Harvard. I'm a visiting scholar in the Center for African Studies. I was previously teaching in history and literature. Acknowledging that I identify as a teacher scholar is my way of indicating that I treat my teaching work as just as important as my research. I've been in the classroom for over 10 years, primarily working in that time with first-year college students at various universities in the area. So I receive our kids at the end of their K through 12 journey. So I want to begin by answering this question by saying that I want to suggest that we rethink the terms that we're using in this conversation. The term "advanced learner" has a real asset-based mindset in what that communicates, whereas we're typically talking about the students who are performing the lowest in our schools as the neediest or the highest needs students, which to me communicates a deficit-based thinking that we need to shift. And so I want to bring to this discussion tonight my thinking about how we deal with the reality in any urban school district, including our own, of having really mixed levels of preparation in our classrooms. By saying that if we could put aside these labels and recognize that our general education is largely not meeting the needs of a lot of our students right now, we could actually start to come together and think about all the range of needs that are being unmet. So if we think about our tiered, multi-tiered instructional model, for example, so the general education, that's our Tier One instruction. We have invested heavily in our general education, teaching and learning, professional development, especially in the past few years. But the research shows that we are seriously underinvesting in the Tier Two and Tier Three level instruction that some of our kids, as advanced learners, are needing access to, and that other students who are further behind, who may also have advanced learning qualities that we aren't recognizing, would benefit from. So my primary proposal here tonight that I would be happy to follow up on is we need to start investing in the Tier Two, Tier Three instructional supports and systems: time, instructional materials, and teacher training, so that teachers can differentiate instruction to meet all needs in the classroom.
I am running for school committee because I think that Cambridge can have the best schools in the world. I was a classroom teacher for a long, long time and an administrator, and now I work as an equity-driven school designer. I also create curriculum, and I also do a lot of work with youth leadership programming right here in the city. My daughter is a fifth grader at the Baldwin School, and I've been on the school council there for the last three years, including two years as co-chair. I think it's really important, when we think about reaching all students, that we're looking at all of the different ways that we can do that in a classroom and all of the mechanisms we have to provide that type of instruction, including scheduling, curriculum, and also thinking about what it really means for students to be able to actually learn. We know that a regulated brain is a learning brain, so first and foremost, we need to create schools that are actual learning environments, where kids feel seen, cherished, and that's reflected in the way that curriculum is delivered and the types of curriculum that students are participating in. One of the ways that we can reach all learners in a classroom is by thinking about project-based learning. Project-based learning is an evidence-based way for teachers to differentiate while also teaching the deeper learning competencies like critical thinking, academic mindset, and all of the other skills that we want all learners to have. In a project-based learning classroom, students are engaged in real-world learning, experiential learning, and all sorts of other types of skills that they need, not just for school but for the future. So that's one way that we can reach all learners. The second way is by thinking about flexible daytime schedules. This works at the elementary school, the upper schools, and the high schools. When we build time into the day for students to be met at the level where they are, we're actually creating opportunities for all kids, and that's equity. So for example, we can have flexible time, genius time, enrichment time, time for kids to be met in meaningful, purposeful ways. So if kids need advanced opportunities, they get that. If kids need extra enrichment, they get that. This is possible, and we should do that. This is also possible at the high school. We're already thinking about doing a scheduling audit, and I think that's great. When we put time into the day to meet kids where they are, they're actually engaged and interested in coming to school, and they're allowed to follow their passions and things that interest them, and that helps all learners no matter what. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Caroline Hunter, currently the vice chair of the Cambridge School Committee. I'm a veteran educator, 34 years in the Cambridge Public Schools at the high school, as student government advisor, supervising clubs, running the Student Service Center, five years as assistant principal, where I was responsible for supervising and evaluating teachers, supervising the custodial staff, actually running the high school operationally, in charge of graduation, the catalog, and scheduling. As vice chair of the school committee, I was responsible for negotiating with our leadership team, three contracts for the paraprofessionals, clerks, and safety. In addition, one of the responsibilities of the vice chair is to meet with the superintendent and the mayor in addition to the regular attendance at school committee meetings. In response to the question, I don't think Cambridge is unique in terms of multi-levels in a classroom. As a classroom teacher at Cambridge, when I dealt with this issue, I was responsible for developing curriculum, for adjusting the lessons, and for differentiating instruction within the classroom. In one of my freshman classes, college algebra classes, I had a significant large, a significant number of students with special needs programs, which meant that classroom came with a specialized educator with a background in math and special education. So it's not a unique situation. This is a situation that we have to deal with in every classroom, regardless of whether it's a math classroom, language arts classroom, any other classroom. There's no determinant for the abilities that children bring to the classroom. It's our responsibility as educators and skilled professionals to adjust to those levels and provide the necessary instruction. So one of the ways that we can do that is for routine reports, for differential instruction, for data gathering about student growth, looking at schools both as a collective but also individually, and looking at the models for instruction. We've invested heavily in a new math curriculum and also in the professional development monies to bring our staff up to speed. So it's about routine monitoring, accountability for staff, looking at the responses from students and caregivers in terms of the delivery of our product. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Weinstein, a member of the school committee, and I ask for your number-one vote to reelect me to build on what I've accomplished. I've lived in Cambridge for 24 years. I'm a proud Cambridge Public Schools parent of an eighth grader and a class of 2025 CRLS alum. My commitment to education begins with my own public school experience, where I did well, loved my teachers, made lifelong friends, but could see disparities in opportunity. And I became a teacher and taught in public elementary and high schools, in a special education summer camp, School for the Deaf, and spent my career in K-12 and college education. I also researched policy and teacher leadership at the Harvard Grad School of Education, and I now help lead a 50-state civic education program based at Brandeis University. I'm proud of the Cambridge Public Schools, but I'm not satisfied. As a school committee member, I've worked with others throughout our community to achieve many significant steps, but there's a long-term projects, and it'll take strong leadership, deep experience, and continued commitment to see them through. Some of those results: universal preschool for all, Algebra One for all in eighth grade, science of reading-based literacy instruction. I've worked with colleagues to update our hate and bias-related incident policy. Speaking to our classrooms, while I have not seen five grade levels of difference in mastery of material in one classroom as common in Cambridge, our differentiated instruction is designed to address multiple learning needs in the same classroom. Every child is an individual. Teachers are prepared to differentiate instruction to meet the needs of each child, and all kids benefit from diversity in the classroom, including diversity of learning styles. And children getting support to reach grade level can contribute to the classroom learning of their peers when we have the supports in place for the classroom. The framework we use in Cambridge, as has been mentioned, is MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports, sometimes shown as a triangle, with Tier One being the base of the triangle, the instruction all students receive; Tier Two being some push-in or pull-out instruction as needed for children with particular needs; and Tier Three being the relatively uncommon situation when the general education classroom isn't possible as a fit. And we've tended to focus on that triangle with attention to children in need of supports to reach grade level, but I've been advocating for us to look at it as a diamond, including Level One, Two, and Three interventions for students ready for additional challenge. And knowing that there are children who are twice exceptional, in that they may benefit from supports in some areas while needing advanced learning support in others. So I'm focused on strong implementation of our new K-12 ELA and math curricula, ensuring high-quality professional development and peer mentoring, and building our cradle-to-career system of supports that will ensure that we close these persistent opportunity gaps by working in collaboration with partners. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alex Bowers. I have twin daughters who are sophomores at CRLS. I've been involved with the schools since they entered JK at the Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School. I've been involved with friends groups. I've been elected to three different school councils. I'm currently serving on the CRLS School Council. And I also worked on the revamping of the School Council Handbook under Robin Harris. And I also was the main author for the recent Student Handbook for the High School. I also reported for the Cambridge Day Newspaper on the schools for more than five years, and I actually reported on three school election cycles, so I have seen it from both sides now. I also do have some teaching experience. I taught at a small grammar school in Lahore, Pakistan, and also at a high school in Changsha, China. Regarding meeting the needs of a wide range of students, there are many things that the school system has in place, but I do think that there is room for improvement. Following through on developing the individual learning plans, I think tailoring, you know, a plan for each student to their strengths and to the areas where they need improvement is very important. Identifying why a student may be falling behind is also vital. Providing targeted professional development for teachers, I think, is key. And the addition of more paraprofessionals where the students need them is also very important. Looking at programs that are successful and popular in Cambridge, including Montessori, the immersion programs, some of the other programs within the city, the music programs, Codaly, I hope I said that right, are also things that can keep students involved in the schools and in learning. I know that there are some after-school programs that blend having fun with learning math. I believe one of the key programs is Held at Paws, the Putnam Avenue Upper School. There are also programs to help strengthen the relationship between caregivers and educators, which can also be very important. Thank you.
No, I'm not campaigning. But imagine everyone is asked to wear the same size t-shirt. That's what happens in CPS, the one-size-fits-all approach, and that's the root cause of the many challenges, including tonight's discussion, equity. Most of our children's needs are not met because of this. I'm Judging Lee. I'm a cancer genetics by training, trained to look for root causes, not just symptoms. I'm also a parent of two children attending public schools here in Cambridge, one a neurodivergent, one a self-motivated, quick learner. I was an advanced learner, skipped a grade, and was one of the most, the youngest in my grades, 400 students. And so I understand it's like having learning needs that don't fit the standard mold. I homeschool my children for several years and experienced how very different learning styles can be accommodated successfully. Our classrooms are like gardens with many types of plants, but we give them only one set of growing conditions. Obviously, majority of our students don't thrive. We don't get good harvest. The solution is not to find the perfect growing condition, but to recognize every child's need and give them the right condition to grow. With that, I propose empowering teachers, provide resources, the right resources, flexibility, autonomy, time, so teachers can truly reach every student. Multi-adult classrooms, ensure every class has teachers, paras, special ed, and support staff doing the co-teaching, skilled to the needs of learners. We already have the manpower and resources. The key is to deliver them directly to the classrooms instead of spending on things that don't directly benefit learning. In other words, instead of making 7,000 t-shirts in M-size, make t-shirts that fit what the child needs in their size. So all students get access to the same core content, but instruction is adapted to each learning style and type. That means also move away from test-driven mythology teaching and also have meaningful assessments, and that also includes project-based learning. When we talk about project-based, it's about activities specifically designed to achieve a goal of that student that we want them to achieve. Assignments that engage students, integrate their interests. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Luisa de Paula Santos. For the last two years, I was working as a paraprofessional at the Fletcher Maynard Academy in the scale program, which is the autism program. I currently am working as a para in Somerville, also in the autism program. I have a long background in labor organizing, and I got a master's degree in urban policy and planning. You mentioned a range of five grade levels. In my work in special ed, I saw that range was even wider when you accounted for not only students' needs but also their overlooked strengths. I know of one student, for example, with an extremely high visual spatial intelligence but an extremely low information processing speed. The answer, I feel, isn't tracking, it's providing the resources, like dedicated co-teachers and interventionists, and properly supporting special education staff that allow educators to truly personalize learning and uncover the advanced capabilities in students who might otherwise be left behind. A classroom with a wide range of abilities isn't a problem to be managed, but an opportunity to be met with adequate resources. My focus is on ensuring every classroom has the tools to thrive in that reality. That means improving educator-to-student ratios, so educators can give individualized attention to ensure each student is advancing at the appropriate level for them, fully funding co-teaching models and ensuring every school has robust specialist support staff, investing in high-quality, ongoing professional development for educators on differentiated instruction within inclusive classrooms. True academic excellence is about properly supporting teachers to meet every learner where they are. Thank you.
Question two, two minutes, and please state your name before your answer. How will you ensure that the school committee has appropriate oversight, such that it delivers on its academic policies in general and specifically over the new policies related to academic excellence? One, offering Algebra One in eighth grade. Two, the April 2025 policy committing to the identification and support of advanced learners starting this fall. And first, I'll answer for Jose Luis. Oversight is one of the school committee's most important responsibilities. In my time on the committee, I've pushed us to move beyond one-time decisions and focus on monitoring, using data to evaluate programs and adjust course as necessary. For policies like Algebra One in eighth grade and supporting advanced learners, we can't just pass the policy and walk away. We need clear metrics, regular reporting, and transparency. That includes knowing how many students are enrolling in advanced courses, whether supports are in place for those who need extra help, and whether unintended consequences are emerging. I have consistently asked that we track the impact of math acceleration because without oversight, we risk leaving students behind. As we move forward, I will advocate for a dashboard of key academic indicators, scheduled reports to the committee, and public accountability when goals aren't met. Oversight means both celebrating successes and being honest about what needs fixing. And I will continue to insist on both.
Hi, I'm Luisa de Paula Santos. Oversight must ensure that these policies don't recreate the inequities of the old gifted and talented model. My measure of success isn't just offering Algebra One but improving learning conditions so that more students have access to it and can succeed. I will push for public equity audits of these new programs, tracking enrollment by race, income, and IEP status. True oversight means investing in the pathways, such as ensuring every fifth, sixth, and seventh grader has access to the high-quality math instruction that prepares them for Algebra, not just creating a gatekeeping mechanism for eighth grade. An identification must be dynamic and inclusive, based on multiple measures and teacher observation, not a single high-stakes test that disproportionately benefits students with access to tutoring and test prep. When we talk about identifying advanced learners, we must use methods that find the students whose gifts aren't obvious on a test. Many of my former students with IEPs were among the most creative and profound thinkers in the school, but they would never be identified by a traditional screening. True oversight means ensuring these policies include multiple equitable identification pathways, so we don't overlook differentiated forms of intelligence. Thank you.
Judging Lee. Excellent education comprises excellent academics, mental well-being, and life skills. Mental well-being is the foundation of learning. Students must feel safe, supported, and joyful before they can fully engage. Equip students with resilience, creativity, critical thinking, and the ability to learn how to learn, preparing them for an unpredictable future. So to specifically address the algebra or whatever subjects, we have to understand that they are the tool to teach students how to think and solve problems, not just to pass tests or equip them with that particular knowledge. So we need to first look at the data, both quantitative and qualitative, and talk to the teachers, talk to the caregivers and the students themselves, to see what their needs are, and jointly make the decision together. And ensuring the assess, sometimes students do poorly in math does not mean they are bad in math. For example, they could be due to reading disability, so we want to make sure they have access to it. And also, we have to have flexible teaching style. A lot of times, the curriculum is fixed with the method that you have to use, this particular method. But we can, as long as they know the concept, we can use whatever method that's driven by the student interest. And offer multiple path: algebra, geometry, statistics, and related components, so students can explore strengths and interests. Students who are ready, they should take it. And also, we can use the skill-based grouping. Identify teachers who excel in math or whatever subject, and allow the students who have mastered a skill to work with them daily. a skill to work with them daily. With new concepts are introduced, students could be quickly assessed if they already know the material. Then they move to the accelerated group. This is not traditional grade-level tracking. Groups are flexible and regularly reassessed. Students move in and out as they demonstrate masterly. And all learners continue to receive strong instruction and support at their current level. This ensures no student is left behind, while still challenging those who are ready. And I, and I've attended meetings on algebra, and I know that the policy is...
Hi, I'm Alex Bowers. And regarding how the school committee can provide appropriate oversight for the administration of the district, one of the starting points is actually a presentation that was published at the June 17th School Committee meeting regarding the progress of students using mostly iReady data as the measurement metric. And one of the things that startled me about the report, this bottom graph here, which you may not be able to see, but you can get the presentation online, has a very wide range of student achievement, both above and below grade level. And one of the things that in the past has also surprised me about the way the district uses iReady information is that if you're a high achiever, it is capped. You actually do not know how well your student is doing, because they will not provide that information to you unless you request it in particular. But using that aggregate data as a starting point, the school committee should expect even monthly reports. The iReady data is almost instantaneous. So to report, to, to receive reports monthly, I don't think is unreasonable, and to really track how the supports that the students are being provided are working. The other thing is that the school committee did pass in April, instructed, passed something instructing the administration to provide the identification of advanced learners, and it was due at the end of August, so August 31st. I made a call today to see how the progress is coming along on that, and at this point, it's not public. So I think that is a good starting point for the school committee to go on.
Hi, I'm David Weinstein. A key lever, maybe the most important lever of the school committee is policy. I was a co-sponsor of our August 2024 Algebra One policy and lead sponsor of the April 2025 update to our advanced learning policy. Each measure included timelines. Just a quick note is that we did receive an update of what that plan would be in the summer. I don't think it's been made, you know, accessible in the way that it should. But I will note that each measure included timelines. I'm committed to ensuring that we, as a committee, get updates on time, and if adjustments to either policy are recommended by teachers and administrators, that we consider those policy adjustments as a body, but that we stay on track unless we've changed our policies. This will be achieved by reports to the committees, to the committee, and updates in subcommittee and full school committee meetings, so the full community has on-the-record access to our updates on progress and any questions, concerns, proposed modifications. The advanced learning policy committed us to putting procedures in place before this school year, and we'll be next updated by January 31st. Looking forward to developing further policy measures to keep us moving forward on this front. I also want to note that our math teachers have done great professional development work with Dr. Kentaro Iwasaki, focused on complex instruction, which is also supporting the success of our math learners. For two years, he's been facilitating workshops for all of our sixth to 12th, 12th grade math teachers. And he also will be doing the same for our sixth to 12th grade science teachers shortly. He, in fact, recently shared in a public post that it's the first year where all algebra students took honors algebra at the high school. So I think it's, it's paying off. There are short and long-term goals that we need to track. We need time to implement and iterate new curricula and approaches, but even in the very short term, we need to be speaking with teachers and caregivers and students to evaluate that implementation and inform that iteration. In long term, we need to look at outcomes for children beyond a single class per year and be ready to change course and evolve when, as with our literacy instruction, we learn that there is evidence that a different approach will serve our children and advance our equity and excellence, excellence goals more effectively.
Thank you, Caroline Hunter. The policy for algebra unfortunately has changed over the years. In 1986, 87, as a high school teacher, along with colleagues, I drafted the Concern Black Staff Report, which talked about Cambridge as a tale of two cities. And the then superintendent, Bob Pedican, introduced algebra instruction in the eighth grade. We also recommended using the Algebra Project, which was not adopted. And we also recommended back then that we would use math specialists, starting at the fourth grade level, which is, I think, still an attainable goal if we want to completely overhaul the experience of our young people in algebra. I think the, so our current policies are good. We're trying to get back on track with offering algebra to all eight graders, which we have done in the past over, in a kind of checkered past over the last 30 years. And the wonderful policy around advanced learners is on its way. It's about strategic review of our timeline and our goals, looking at the strategic tutoring we put in place to see how that model works, not only for those who need tutoring below grade level, but to see how far we've advanced the students who need to be on track. We have to monitor student growth. We have to look at the metrics, the timeline, and do process monitoring for all of the policies that we have implemented. We get the data on a regular basis, but the monthly reports might be good, but student growth doesn't happen that rapidly. It's about being patient with the policies that we put in place, and again, providing the most support we can to students and families. And again, this policy has to be undergirded by feedback from students and caregivers. Thank you.
I'm Caitlin Dubey, and as I mentioned before, I've been on the Baldwin School Council for a number of years, two years as co-chair. And one of the ways that we've been disconnected from current school committee policies is the lack of connection between what's happening at the school committee level and what's happening at the school council level. The title of this forum is What's Algebra Got to Do With It? And I think when we answer that question, the answer is a lot, and also not enough. Algebra is currently the code word for what's actually happening in classrooms, what are students actually learning, and how can we ensure that every kid is being met where they are? So this question about algebra and about advanced learning is also really a question about school committee policy and transparency. The actual policy language talks about a robust family engagement process, which we do not currently have. If we have robust family engagement, then teachers are actually functioning as partners with parents, and so not just advanced learners, but all learners are engaged in meaningful dialogue and connection with their teachers, so that students are supported both at home and at school. That's a necessary piece in order for any policy to actually succeed. In addition, for policies to succeed, we absolutely need to have educator voice at school committee meetings. Educators are the ones who enact policies in classrooms, and they're the ones with the most valuable feedback on how those policies are playing out. So in order for us to actually enact any effective policies, we need to have robust family engagement, and we need to have educator voice on school committee. In addition, we need to support educators with specific responsive professional learning opportunities, including coaching models, so that we're sharing best practices across the district, so that any policy we implement, we know if it's successful.
Hi, again, I'm Lily Hafsted, and I neglected to mention earlier that I'm a parent of a third grader at Graham and Parks, where I'm also on the school council and where I chair the budget subcommittee. And I mention this here because there are a lot of ways I want to answer this question, but I'm going to focus right now on budget oversight. School committee's oversight has full discretion to approve or not our district budget. And right now, the way the school committee is working and has been for many years is sort of rubber stamping whatever the superintendent puts in front of them. And that's not working, because we aren't actually really tracking where our money is going, and we are not making strategic decisions about how to spend our money. And this gets back to the point I made earlier about our under-investments in tier-two and tier-three instruction. We don't actually have much data available to us. If you go to our websites, if you go to the website and, and look for data about tier-two, tier-three instruction, it's hard to find. But we have research in progress right now that is going to help us understand the, the bigger picture here, about how we are under-investing in the various supports required to do what Caitlin was talking about just now, about meeting each student where they're actually at. How we spend our money reflects our, our, our values as a district. And so this study that is going on right now, it's called an equity audit. There's a year-one report that's been out for almost two years now, that the district hasn't really done anything with. I think this is an example of how we can improve oversight of the district if the, if the school committee actually relies on the data that it is collecting, that is collected for it by partner organizations, as is the case of this equity audit. Then we could actually act on this information and put best practices into practice. But that's not what's happening right now. So this year-two report is going to come out hopefully any time now, and it's going to be a roadmap, and it's going to have recommendations that we need to follow to, in order to implement the policies that we're talking about today.
I'm Eugenia. I talked about how CPS needs to do better in terms of identifying and supporting kids who might be behind in a given subject. They need to do the same with kids who are ahead. Otherwise, CPS will be driving disparities by letting only well-to-do families give their kids extra support or even leave the system, which is a loss for the whole school community. CPS needs to encourage and nurture the talent of kids in all backgrounds. As the nonprofit Science Club for Girls has shown, women of color are hugely underrepresented in the same STEM fields that are a particular strength of our city. So why isn't CPS one of the best public schools at nurturing that talent? I've been struck when door knocking, especially in subsidized housing, that I heard MIT come up again and again. It's a reminder that while Cambridge has a wealth of research, academic, and STEM excellence, our schools aren't meeting the hopes its families have that their kids will benefit from those opportunities. Okay, so school committee has adopted an advanced learning goal, just like they did the eighth-grade algebra goal. But that was the easy part. Now they need to do the harder work of ensuring they track progress on those goals. What is a timeline? When are the regular check-ins? Are they providing more resources, resources when necessary? And pushing for accountability for those in the system who have not done their part, like being the actual bad guy. As I said, I communicate directly with families about troublesome CPS issues via my newsletter. One example is my newsletter was the only outlet to cover the Sudoku story, where the head of math said kids who'd mastered the material in class could just play a commercially-available game during class time. As a school committee member, I would supplement the work of evaluating and pushing the superintendent and administration in meetings by going directly to local families and media when administration is not doing its part. And since I've got five seconds, you can check out those newsletters at voteeugenia.com.
Have a mixed reputation, and data indicates there is a 20% loss of students to private and charter schools during the upper school window. What do you think is going on with our upper schools, and what would you do to address it? Answering first for Jose Luis Rojas. Upper schools is a difficult and critical stage for students in general. And we know that historically, a significant number of families have chosen private or charter schools during those years. I believe this reflects both perception and real challenges. Parents want to be confident that their children are in engaging, rigorous environments that prepare them well for high school and beyond. To address this, we need to strengthen the academic core, especially in literacy and math, while also expanding opportunities that make learning joyful and relevant, like experiential learning, bilingual programs, and harnessing AI. We must also improve communication with families, so they feel heard and supported. I would also like to assess our current upper school structure created by the Innovation Agenda nearly 20 years ago. We need to ensure high-quality opportunities are offered to all upper school students. When families know their children will be challenged, both challenged and cared for, they'll choose to stay in Cambridge Public Schools. That's the goal I'll continue to work toward.
I'm Eugenia, again. Our middle school problems boil down to a lack of accountability around student learning. Two examples: At CSUS, only 5% of Black students meet or exceed grade expectations in math. And, right here, still, there's a math teacher who has a policy that Black students answer questions first and that white students go last. Without editorializing, these examples show that the school committee isn't holding its administrators and teachers accountable for student learning. Academically, I bet having the advanced learner in eighth-grade algebra policies will help if done correctly. Again, that means student learning must come first, teachers and not union reps, so the actual teachers affected must be involved in the process of how to implement those policies. And both strong support and accountability, being the bad guy, have to be part of the issue. Another issue, though, is discipline. As someone who has spent time in Rikers Island Juvenile Wards, I've seen what can happen when schools play the wrong role in students' lives. Education should be the antidote to court involvement, and yet CPS still suspends students, and at higher rates, for students of color. Robust research has shown a causal link between suspension and poor outcomes like jail or prison. But another CPS issue is allowing behavioral problems to interrupt classroom time. Researchers have shown that instead of suspending kids, they should be given behavioral plans created by school psychologists and social workers. CPS must begin pushing two new priorities here. One, strong support for students with behavioral issues. And two, an absolute commitment to preventing behavioral disturbances from interrupting classroom learning. Thank you.
Hi, Lily Hafsted. So we really need to raise the bar of, of academic excellence in our upper schools. I think this is true across K to 12, but I think this is particularly in terms of, I agree with Jose that there's both perception and reality. And we need to rebuild public faith in our public schools, particularly our, our upper schools, by raising the bar of academic excellence, not lowering it, for all of our students. And to do that, we need to start listening to our educators and our students, and we need to start partnering with families. We've, you've heard these, these talking points before, but the reason I lift them up here is because we aren't listening to our teachers, and that's really apparent in how the accelerated rollout of Algebra One for all eighth graders is happening. Last week, I spoke to a seventh-grade math teacher in the district who said a good day with her students last year was a day in which students weren't crying. That made me want to cry. Makes me want to cry. This accelerated rollout was not, was not planned in consultation with our educators, and our educators and our children are suffering as a result. We have to stop this. We have to stop this top-down decision-making that treats our educators as mere workers in the classroom to deliver a product. They are humans. Teaching is human work. Teaching and learning is fundamentally human work. And we need to invest in our educators, so that they can be doing that work. And that starts by listening to them. Yesterday, I spoke to another math teacher, an eighth-grade math teacher, who is now responsible for teaching this new eighth grade for all, Algebra for All Eighth Graders curriculum that has been rushed. And he has students who are woefully unprepared. And, and meanwhile, he has been told that the, the math educators have been told that the district has just purchased 1,400 licenses for students scoring above grade level on iReady, to be able to do more advanced math in their eighth-grade math class. I think we're prioritizing one group against the interest of others in how this is being rolled out, and we need to stop doing this. And I think that's going to help us improve and raise the bar for all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Caitlin Dubey, and I think that our upper schools should be doing a much better job, and in fact, I'm not convinced that our upper schools ought to exist at all. Middle school is an incredibly magical, important stage of development. It's critical for identity development, and students who are going through this period of life need certain things in order to help them flourish and succeed and meet the challenges. of life need certain things in order to help them flourish and succeed and meet the challenges of what's happening for them neurobiologically, socially, emotionally, in a holistic way. I think that we see families leaving the district and increasing numbers following the COVID-19 pandemic because independent and charter schools are offering things that we're not offering. They're offering advisory programs. They're offering small class sizes. They're offering project-based learning. They're offering to meet students where they are. This is something that we should be doing. When you have an excellent school district, that district is responsive to the needs of its learners, and our learners need things that we are not currently providing. I also think that K through eights, as we know, they're developmentally appropriate and evidence-based best practices for students. So we need to take a long, hard look at the Innovation Agenda. We might have to think about the sunk cost fallacy of having perpetuated those initiatives without much data to back up the success that we had promised young people. And I think that we should consider K through eight models. We have an opportunity to do that in the old Kennedy Longfellow Building, which could be an excellent site to pilot K through eight and other different types of programs that could better serve our students. Our upper schools also need to focus on restorative justice, as do all of our schools, and not in a performative way, but as a piece that is core to building community and also core parts of the curriculum, so that students are learning about harm repair, being an important member of the community, and feeling engaged and important as members of our city.
Thank you. Caroline Hunter. Last year, the school committee focused our learning walks on the middle schools. The learning walks are an opportunity for policymakers, administrators, teachers to set goals, to look at particular issues within classrooms, to visit classrooms, and then to have a structured conversation about grows and challenges. And so part of that process not only included the learning walks, it also included specific sessions with middle schoolers about their suggestions around schools. So we're on the way to looking at our Innovation Agenda. Part of the issue, I think, that we also have to look at is the lack of diversity in our teaching staff. Last year, our Office of Equity Ambassadors through the Office of Belonging had a series of safe-to-fail opportunities for educators, teachers, and paraprofessionals to design learning opportunities. And if you witnessed some of those programs, the majority of them focused on our lack of ability to service our Black boys. So this is a challenge that we have to deal with, particularly in the middle school, where we have to look at the diversity, a lack of diversity of staff. We have to look at the cultural sensitivity in terms of our expectation for all children so that we're meeting them where they are. We have to look more at interest surveys in terms of identifying the things that our children are interested in. We have to look at co-teaching and planning schedules, as well as personalized planning for our students. Part of the Project Success Model, where I served as vice chair and Member Weinstein served this year, is a pilot project to look at families and students so every student, every family has a navigator and a person who accesses all the opportunities for schools. So it's about looking at our program and reevaluating what we're doing and adjusting accordingly. Thank you.
I'm David Weinstein. I've been focused on our upper schools for some time. We have more to do to ensure that the same opportunities in terms of sports, arts, extracurriculars are available across the board at our upper schools. For example, our theater offerings are very robust here at CSUS, but not everywhere. I secured extra funding for upper school theater in two state budget cycles in a row with support from Senator D. Domenico, but we need to do more to make this accessible. We need to build out sports, arts, and other extracurriculars and structure ourselves so that if a student needs to travel to an upper school for a sport or an activity or an academic opportunity, they know that they can, and we make it happen. And I'll be working on this further if we elect it. Both of my children have been in CPS upper schools, Vassal Lane Upper and now Darby Vassal Upper School, one in eighth grade now, one already graduated high school, and have experienced their upper schools as a parent, but I rely on reaching out to families, students, and educators to have a truly comprehensive and evolving picture. As Vice Chair Hunter noted, this year with the School Climate Subcommittee, I visited every upper school, observed classes, and met with focus groups of upper school students. There will always be some who opt for other schools, and we need to better understand why by talking with students and families. For example, I've heard from Black families who are opting for one of the excellent charter schools in or near Cambridge to find an environment with higher expectations for Black children. We need to take feedback like that as an indicator of areas where we need to improve. And of course, some people opt out looking for things we don't provide and don't intend to provide, like a particular language immersion opportunity, for example. But I do believe that while there are times that our upper schools suffer from an undeserved reputation of poor quality, there is room to improve, and we should also share that strength with the community. I'm a co-sponsor of a motion at tomorrow's School Committee meeting that is calling for a review of the Innovation Agenda. Signature element of that was the establishment of upper schools, and a review of that will, by definition, include assessing what's working and what needs attention in the upper schools. Eighth grade algebra is only the tip of the iceberg. As a teacher, a former English teacher, I'm excited about our new K-12 English Language Arts Curriculum, which provides greater challenge, engaging, full, complex texts and books, room for teacher expertise and autonomy, and our upcoming sixth grade science complex instruction work and new aligned curriculum down the road there. Thank you.
Okay. Alex Bowers. I think that families choose to leave CPS for a whole host of reasons, and I think low academic expectations at many of the upper schools are part of it, whether it's earned or whether it's just by reputation. But in particular, the controversy about both the removal of Algebra I and the difficulty in reinstating Algebra I into the eighth grade curriculum is sort of used by many families as a litmus test of the quality of the education in the upper schools overall. For my kids were in fifth grade in 2021, so it was right when the COVID was, life was slowly returning to some kind of normalcy. And at that time, we were evaluating where to send our girls. And there was a very marked lack of communication from the district about really anything to do with the upper school they were slated to go into. And so we made a choice to send them to CCSC, which is the Community Charter School of Cambridge over near MIT. And having one child in the public system, in the Cambridge system, and one at CCSC was very illuminating. Differences in how they were placed in math, differences in the academic expectations, it was very, 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 very different. And ultimately, one child did decide to come back to Cambridge and graduated from Paws for eighth grade, and the other remained in CCSC. And their experiences happened very different, and I would hope that Cambridge would start looking into why people, parents, families, make these decisions, because it is a very important stage in a child's life, and we all just want to make the best decision for our children.
Judgingly, the one-size-fits-all, test-driven approach has made many students feel disengaged, whether they are struggling or advanced learners, and the lack of support or intervention academically, socially, emotionally, and developmentally. Parents are concerned about discipline, academic rigor, and overall school quality. And there is also high turnover of teachers in many of the middle school. So what I would propose is to create a joyful, supportive environment where students feel seen, students and teachers feel seen, respected, and valued. Provide academic access at each student's level for struggling and advanced learners, giving them challenges and support they need. Implement skill-based flexibility so students progress at their own pace. Groups are regularly reassessed to ensure no students is left behind. Proactively identify and support learners using teacher observations, portfolios, project works, and family input, not relying solely on grades. Incorporate lifelong skills and activities beyond academics, leadership, collaboration, creativity, problem-solving, arts, athletics, the steam. Ensure learning experiences are culturally responsive and inclusive, reflecting students' diverse backgrounds, interests, and identities. Partnership with local institutions and organizations. Bring in programs during school hours or after school aligned with students' interests. Must be done jointly with teachers, caregivers, and students so programs are meaningful, engaging, truly tailored to learners. Students who feel engaged, supported, challenged, and celebrated for their unique abilities are more likely to stay in a school. There's a sense of belonging. Recognize that success has multiple paths, from academic excellence to creative or applied achievements, and celebrate all meaningful outcomes. And lastly, we need to remember not just the middle school, we also have to prepare them before preteens also start encountering these changes. I have a preteen at home now, I know that. Thank you.
Hi, Luisa de Paula Santos. Families leave, I believe, when they feel their child's needs are not being met. I've spoken with families who felt pushed out because they're told their child is a problem rather than a priority. To keep families, we must build schools that are known for their ability to nurture every type of learner. I see that as shifting from remediation to enrichment. Too often, students who struggle in one area are pulled out for basic skills drills early on, missing the engaging grade-level content that could spark their motivation. We need to flip that model and bring more project-based arts-integrated learning to everyone. I also agree with folks who said, listen to educators. We must move beyond seeing IEPs and other assessments as documents for compliance and rather work with and train our staff to use these as blueprints for unlocking genius, as well as giving staff the space to suggest creative or alternative methods of assessment. Furthermore, this attrition at the level of upper schools, I believe, is a symptom of a broader issue. The failure of our controlled choice system has led to a perception of have-and-have-not schools, and families with privilege are often those with the greatest ability to exercise their choice to opt out. I would address this issue by exploring how the district might put an end to the controlled choice system, which further ingrains this tracking based on perceived achievement levels. My solution would be to invest in true neighborhood schools with equity guarantees. Every upper school must have exemplary arts, advanced coursework, clubs, and facilities so no family feels they have to go outside CPS for quality education. And we must be honest, a system that segregates by class and race will always lead to this kind of attrition. The best way to keep families is to create a system where every school is a school of choice, because every school is excellently resourced.
And thank you. That ends our first session. Really appreciate all the candidates, the hard work preparing today, and so many great ideas and thoughts out here. I'd like to announce a 10-minute intermission, so please get up, stretch your legs. The candidates are, a lot of them are going to be right outside. Please go say hello to the candidates, and then we'll be back here in 10 minutes to start the next session. Thank you. Okay. Welcome to the second session. As we noted, we have so many candidates, we're so excited to hear everyone's ideas. Timing is going to be very tight. We ask you to watch the timer and hand over the mic before or at the beep, because the next candidate's time starts almost immediately. So this will test your ability to share and follow directions. Okay, question one. And then we'll begin with Richard.
I don't need one, but if you want to use it.
Right. Otherwise, you have something to do with your hand. Test it, make sure it works.
Hello, hello?
Great, okay. So question one, two and a half minutes. Please also introduce yourself as part of the answer. It's common in CPS classrooms to have a wide range of student ability, sometimes five or more grade levels between the lowest and highest performing students. What will you do to ensure CPS meets this range of student needs?
Thank you. I'm Richard Harding. Thanks for the sponsors for having this. I'm a public health professional of 24 years. I've been on the school committee before, and I came back last term to hopefully help the Cambridge Public Schools become the best public school system in America. What I would do, though, is really what I've been doing, is pressing on every day and every time I get an opportunity to speak about the reality that has to be student achievement, excuse me, excellent instruction in the classroom measured by student achievement. The notion that we can decide that there's some arbitrary place that excellent instruction can be measured in other ways other than student achievement drives me absolutely crazy. When I think about the question, I really think about how hard it is. Differentiated instruction is somewhat easy to say, but it's very hard to do. And the truth is that we have to invest in our professionals, the teachers, our classroom teachers, through professional development that's intentionally going to train them to understand how to meet kids' needs at all levels. We have to make sure that the resources that we spend in our over two, excuse me, quarter-billion-dollar budget is focused on classroom instruction. That's where the pain is. And far too many times, I'm on the school committee in other places, and people are talking about everything but student achievement. It matters, right? When you look at some of our schools, over time, you can look at all the longitudinal data, these kids have been failing in these particular schools because the root cause is low expectations followed by not enough professional development for teachers to understand how to meet their needs. That's the reality. That's why we're here, right? When I used to talk about this, it used to be one of those things that was sort of a rich affluent issue where, okay, if the rich affluent white parents didn't get what they wanted, they would take their kid and leave. Well, guess what? The Black working-class students are taking their kids and they're leaving as well. And this is why this is such an important issue to me. When I talk about each and every day of holding teachers accountable, I become the bad guy, right? It becomes me against them. The reality is that most teachers want to be evaluated. Most teachers want professional development. And I'm hopeful that all teachers want to make sure that each and every kid in their classroom meets their academic potential. But this isn't a nice-guy's game. You have to press people. You have to hold them accountable. You have to make sure that they're meeting people's needs and making sure that they understand that this is a tough job, right? To educate all kids at high levels is not an easy thing. So one of the things I try to stress each and every time is holding teachers accountable and giving them the resources, the vast resources that we have, to make sure they can hone in on their craft and teach all kids at high levels.
Was that a gong? Oh my God, I love. Hi, my name is Annie Coburn. I would like to make a quick distinction between ability and current outcomes. So in New York City, before we moved here, one of my then-five-year-old-daughter's teachers dismissed our concerns about how she was doing in school by saying, she seems like she's doing fine for someone of average intelligence. And this kid had just grasped the concept of a bell curve, and she also had a hard time recognizing the letter A. So it turns out that she has pretty profound dyslexia. So, and by the way, that same kid has also been drawing with perspective since the age of three. What I am trying to say is that every single one of our kids has different abilities, different capacities, different areas of growth and need at the same time, just like all of us. And so every single classroom has to be able to teach kids within, with multiple, like, levels of learning outcome and performance, because we are all, every one of us, people who have multiple levels of outcome and performance baked into ourselves. So that's why, like, ability, the concept of ability, it feels static, where what we're really looking for is how to improve student growth in comprehension and skills. That happens at different rates for every student and all people. What I'd like to know is how do you learn about the areas in which you excel? How do you have the time and space to help those students lean into the thing that makes them unique? And how do you get the support to answer your needs, both as a teacher and as a student? So, for example, my daughter got help because she had access to an Orton Gillingham-trained specialist at Kennedy Longfellow. That's one thing CPS should continue to use, the Science of Reading-based curricula. Proper implementation of the recently passed Advanced Learners policy should also help with this question. And then I also support consistent district-wide core curricula, early and accurate identification of learning disorders and reading problems, swift action on IEPs, and protected time in the day for acceleration and assistance. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Elizabeth Hudson. If you want to know about my background, you can Google me, I've got, or look at my website. I've got three kids, I live on Harvard Street. And when we talk about CPS meeting the range of student needs, first, let's talk a little bit about what's not working and what we're doing today. I'll start out with some history. 15 years ago, there's a broad education world, there was a broad education world move to de-tracking or putting all students in the same classroom regardless of ability. This was based on a fear that students would internalize the labels advanced or not advanced, and the thesis, most notably of a Stanford professor, that there are no advanced students, just pushy parents. And to a degree, we know that this is true. We all know that there are ambitious parents who will shove their child into the next subject before they understand the first viscerally, but it's not entirely true. There really is a point beyond which a student has grasped the material and is ready to move on. So what did Cambridge do? Well, we love a faddish education policy, so we jumped right on that bandwagon. We took areas where we had previously allowed We took areas where we had previously allowed students to sort into different classes by preparedness, and we flattened them. We did it in middle school, we did it in high school. We not only flattened classes together, but we flattened instruction within the classrooms. Everybody gets the same work, and if you find it easy, too easy, too bad, and if you find it too hard, too bad. And if you want to sit with other kids and work, you know, work together with the other kids who find it too easy, that's too bad again. That would be tracking, and that would be unacceptable. And I'm taking a minute of my time to tell you this story, because I want you to know it wasn't by accident. It's not like we don't have the resources to teach in different ways to different kids, we are just choosing not to. You know, a week ago, you know, and this wasn't some sort of top-down administrative decision, a week ago, every candidate here sat at the CEA forum, and we all said we need to be listening to teachers. And the reality is here that we did listen to teachers. This is something that the faculty elected to do. And maybe there wasn't complete support across the faculty, maybe just the more politically involved ones, but this is the direction in which the faculty wanted to go. And that means that in order to fix it, you're going to have to stand up to people and actually say, "Actually, I disagree. It doesn't work, it doesn't work here, it hasn't worked anywhere else." And there's good data now to show both of those things, and it was wrong. Yeah. So, let's talk a little bit about what to do next. First and foremost, and I hope we get to this, you know, in the second and third questions as well, we need to stop promoting kids who aren't ready. If you have a kid who's five to seven grade levels behind, and that's not uncommon, we have middle school classrooms right now where there's span, ability span of seven grade levels of ability. Yeah, it's, you know, that student doesn't belong in that grade level. It's not our fault the year that they come in, but it is our fault every year after that when we choose to promote them to the next grade to which they are not prepared. We need to allow students to enroll in the classes that match their abilities. This is explicitly not the policy of CPS today. If that's logistically hard, requires moving buildings, then, nope. I'll get back to the rest of this later, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Arjun Jacob Mar. I'm an attorney, a public servant, school council and Friends member, and a proud dad of a fourth grader in CPS. I'm running because public education is a public good that brought my family to America that I want to preserve. Look, the best thing we can do to meet varying needs in the same classroom is to have multiple educators in every classroom. It's just a fact that two people can do differentiated instruction better than one, and that the smaller class sizes are, de facto, the more individualized attention every kid can get. And it's just the reality that if you have one teacher responsible for 20 students, the students who are struggling the most will get the most attention. When teacher resources are limited, that is the inevitable and frankly, correct choice. But if you want to do it in a way that serves kids at the top too, you should invest in multiple educators. Tobin does this, extremely successfully, with great results. Beyond that, I think we need to focus on giving kids a well-rounded whole-child education, and that we may have to relax the rigidity of our curricula that the district has prescribed. We need to create space within the curriculum for teachers to meet and engage kids where they are. So if a kid is bored with CKLA, for example, we can give them additional texts that do engage them. Some ways to think about this, it could be pullouts. We already have a strong structure in place for pullouts for kids who need extra help or who have special needs. Because that structure already exists, we can replicate it for advanced learners who need something extra, and this is already happening in some of our schools. We need to engage teacher autonomy. We need to allow them to use their professional judgment regarding how to supplement our rigid curricula with additional programming that can meet kids where they are. We should consider project-based learning, which can both engage kids better, enable deeper learning, and teach them additional and interdisciplinary skills. We should consider arts in education and independent silent reading, where kids can read text at their own level. In general, the more different things you teach or incorporate in teaching, the more likely it is you're going to find an area where students are not necessarily advanced and where they can be challenged. The last thing I'll say on this topic regarding differentials within classrooms is that if you want to close these gaps, you also should focus on elevating kids at the bottom. We should reduce the need for differentiated instruction by ensuring that all our kids, including those from underserved communities, are as close to grade level as they can be.
Hi, my name is Jess Getz, and I've been a Cambridge Public School parent for nearly a decade. I've come to run for school committee because I want to be a part of making it more effective and bringing it in alignment with the lived experiences in our schools. I'm a hard worker with a track record of reliable involvement and support for both my school communities and for the district. I will bring humility to the school committee. I am not an education policy, and I will not pretend to be one. But, as an epidemiologist, I have plenty of experience with using data to answer questions and target interventions. I feel strongly that school is about more than academic achievement, but also that the other goals we have for kids, like regulation and connection, can pay dividends towards academic success. The questions we are being asked here tonight are not only important, but for me, they are deeply personal. I have two upper school students who consistently score above grade level on the iReady and the MCAS. I have had to think a lot about what that should mean for them at school. Obviously, this is a forum being held by CALA, so I would imagine advanced learners are top of mind for many audience members. But I'd like to think about the whole spectrum of needs within a classroom. Ideally, every child is met where they are, and in that way, students who need additional support meet grade level, and children who need opportunities beyond grade level remain engaged. And from many of my conversations with voters and other caregivers, I've found that students on both ends of the spectrum are not being well-served. I don't believe that school committee members are or should be policy experts, but I do believe the school committee can promote policies, either through how we allocate budget or manage a superintendent, that support and improve differentiation in the classroom. Here are some characteristics I would look for in policies aimed at ensuring our classrooms meet a wide range of needs. First, I would consider all the ways in which needs may not be met. If we consider all the types of need deficits in one larger policy, then we can centralize the administration of additional resources, and classroom teachers are not learning multiple systems. I propose using clear and multiple and objective as possible methods for identifying additional needs, and think about how that will work especially for students who do not speak English as their first language. There needs to be flexibility that is on and off ramps. I really appreciate the definition of advanced learners on your website, and that it is not always a static state. And non-exclusivity, like kids who are not identified, should also have the opportunity to try the new and engaging things.
My name is Jane Hershey. I lived in Cambridge for about 35 years. I have two daughters who went through the Cambridge Public Schools. And 25 years ago, I started a program called City Sprouts. It's a project-based learning program, a nature-based science program, that's now in all of the elementary schools in Cambridge and in 12 Boston schools. I'm currently, I'm no longer leading City Sprouts. I'm currently working as a nonprofit interim executive director, currently with a small nonprofit in Roselandale, South Boston. I'm running for Cambridge School Committee because I know our schools well, and I love our schools, and I want to be part of a school committee that makes them better, that identifies the challenges, that hears from parents and from teachers and from students, and works together to overcome those challenges, to make the schools that we envision and that we all want for ourselves and for our children. The question is about a wide range of abilities and how should teachers respond, or how can we expect teachers to respond? And my answer is differentiated instruction. It's not a pipe dream, it's something I think all teachers are already doing. They're, to teach even a curriculum that's not designed for differentiated instruction, a good teacher is already doing that with the various students in their room. But an intentional differentiated instruction is designed to help a teacher meet a range of needs, both academic needs, but also special education needs in the classroom. I believe in an inclusive classroom model, but like all of these, they only succeed when the teachers have the resources that they need, the time and the tools, where there's a curriculum that can be used for differentiated learning, and when all students' needs are identified and addressed. So, that's how I think teachers are able to meet where their students are at. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Alborz. I'm in biotech, and locally, I helped organize several educational outreach activities. In the past, I was involved with developing and teaching courses, science and engineering. On the question of how to handle different, you know, student places in given classes, I think there's no easy answer, but I think there is a lot of low-hanging fruit. I'll give two examples, one within the classroom and one outside. Within the classroom, with the, you know, recent rise in AI, there are tools that are quite good and effective at being good aids, and for doing exactly the kind of differentiated learning that we've heard about. Different students get confused about different things, even within the same subject, but using this as an aid and a plus-one to teachers is a win-win, helping both teachers have less of a workload and more easily be able to identify individual challenges for students, and allowing students to be able to focus on the issues that they're currently facing with a particular topic. The second extracurricular level activity that we should work more on implementing is integrating the larger community. We have a lot of very talented people across trades, arts, sciences, and we have some platforms, such as Find a Cambridge right now, that can be extended. But I think that this is something that we can take a lot more effort into integrating students, for instance, that, you know, local graduate students who have a lot of expertise at the universities here, which I've heard are quite good, and making it easier to facilitate mentorship programs and workshop teaching programs with them and students.
Great. Okay, so before we start the next question, we've usually been starting on the ends. I'd like you to pass the microphone, three people to the right, and we'll start in the middle. And then, we're going to have a fun relay to get it down to the other end after your... But I think you guys are up for it, I think we can do this. Exactly. Following directions, executing things that are, you don't always have time to prepare for. Okay, question two, two minutes. Helpful to state your name before answering. How will you ensure that the school committee has appropriate oversight such that it delivers on its academic policies in general, and specifically over the new policies related to academic excellence? One, offering algebra in eighth grade, and two, the April 2025 policy, committing to the identification and support of advanced learners, starting this fall?
Thanks, Arjun Jacob Mar, sounds like Argentina. I think that a critical element of oversight is access to information. One way that Cambridge has historically been able to limit change is by keeping information siloed. So, for example, if you're the school, a school committee member, and you get all your information from administrator reports, you're going to have a filter presentation. So for both of these issues, I think one of the keys to delivery is understanding how implementation is going on the ground. And that involves being in school communities, engaging with educators, caregivers, students, and administrators. It involves building enough trust with those communities so that, for example, an eighth-grade math teacher will tell you honestly about what's going well and what isn't in their classrooms, without worrying that their boss or their department head is going to be mad at them because they found out from you. Getting to the specifics of these, what I would like to see from the implementation of universal algebra is this: who is it serving and not serving, and where do we go from there? As I stand here today, I believe that the choice to move away from algebra was a mistake, but I don't know if universal algebra I will benefit the top third of learners, or the top two-thirds, or 80% or 97%. No one does. And depending on what the answer to that question is, it might impact how we want to structure learning in the future. Do we keep it for all learners? Do we think about starting some measure of tracking in middle school? Do we think about supplementing with more advanced course offerings in eighth grade? That's the kind of information that we should be aggressively gathering in regular consultation with educators and administrators and families over the next few years. It's even more complicated with respect to advanced learner identification, because we have a tendency in this district, when we talk about advanced learners, the hyper-focus on STEM. But there are a lot of kids with advanced learning needs, aptitudes or interest in other areas, sometimes ELA, sometimes social studies, sometimes in the arts or vocational field. If we really want to identify and serve all advanced learners, that's an ambitious project that will need real cooperative collaboration with educators and administrators. So again, it comes down to being proactive, being in school committees, and developing and maintaining the relationships that allow us to keep a finger on the pulse. Right, three to the right.
No, 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 just next to each other now.
Okay, thank you. Jess Getz. We're working on it. This question gets to the heart of why I'm even in this race, which, what is, what is and how do we conduct appropriate oversight, and how will we know when we've done it right? I am focused on the processes by which the school committee works, because I believe effective governance is the only way to implement any policies, academic or otherwise. I will stipulate that having done oversight of policies correctly is different from student-based outcomes that may tell us whether the policies are having their intended effect. So the ship has sailed on the rollout of eighth-grade algebra. It was clearly suboptimal, and it didn't serve students or teachers well. I hope that that situation can be better for any policy regarding advanced learners, but my confidence in that is already low, and this is primarily because the only caregivers who know there is a draft policy for advanced learners are those who are on the CALA mailing list, and this is not okay. It brings to mind so many questions about who is actually creating policies and how priorities are being decided. A key aspect of how the school committee works that needs to change in order for appropriate oversight to occur is how the meetings work. There are consistent, there's a consistent disconnect between the policies being discussed and the presentations from the district. No work actually takes place, save for some rewording of resolutions here and there. So I believe good oversight could look something like this. For each policy, create a schedule for updates at school committee meetings. Hear from teachers, coaches, caregivers, and principals about how things are going qualitatively, and then examine quantitative data. Look at the eighth-grade assessments that they're taking almost monthly at this point, and look at iReady data. And can we look and see where we are in the curriculum? Are we matching the pace where we're supposed to be? And then we need to respond to what we find out. What do schools need, and how can we get it to them? And lastly, we need to keep the long term in mind. For each policy, we need to determine how many years of evaluation would be good. Like for algebra, we need to make sure we're following up with the high school in the next couple of years, and we need to be ready and willing to revise and watch the growth data and long-term trends.
So in terms of oversight, an area of concern for me is advanced learners from historically marginalized groups, students on the autism spectrum, for instance, or kids whose parents, caregivers aren't familiar with our system of parents advocating for additional resources for their child. And I'm curious about efforts to include all advanced learners, both from the Cambridge Advanced Learners Group and also from the district. But the question is about ensuring how the school committee will have oversight over Algebra I and advanced learners, and maybe more broadly, oversight in general, as Jess pointed out. And this is, I agree, at the core of what the, of what the school committee is responsible for. So, in terms of oversight over, really, all learners, I think setting key indicators is an important piece, establishing those when you're establishing the policy. So if you're serious about evaluating, you think about what are the pieces that we're going to, we're going to look at. And I feel that the key indicators must always include a family's economic status, cultural background, IEP status of the children. Advanced learning, like all special needs, needs to be evaluated for its equitable access as well as for how well participating students are flourishing.
So, in some sense, the best form of oversight for all these policies, you guys, and the most effective tool we have to get feedback from the community, is through the, currently, there's a website, which we get, the school committee can get emails and feedback. I think the most effective thing that we can do is expand that by creating, despite its cons, a open forum for immediate and easier feedback from everybody in the greater
Just read the question one more time?
Oh, for sure. How will you ensure that the school committee has appropriate oversight such that it delivers on its academic policies in general, and specifically over the new policies related to academic excellence? One, offering Algebra I in eighth grade; two, April 2025 policy for identif- One, offering Algebra I in eighth grade; two, April 2025 policy for identification and support of advanced learners.
Yep. Thank you. Let me just start with the Algebra piece. So I think there needs to be a history correction. So way back when I was in the school committee, we did a math review with Bobos and other mathematicians and other folks, and what they said was three simple things. There's only one Algebra, not two, pre-Algebra, all that, there's one. There were not enough professionals that were ready at the time to implement, these are the teachers, Algebra to all kids, in that kids had to start earlier to take Algebra if they ever wanted to reach the end of that math sort of continuum, all the way up to calculus. I sponsored motions way back, 2000-whatever. My name's on the chief motion. I do not know how the district stopped serving Algebra to each kid. This is ridiculous, and we ought to talk about it. How you do it, though, is you make sure... And I want you to check out a policy, C-17 in 2002, 2017, a policy you should look at. But how we do it is to do just what Elizabeth Hudson and I did. We learned to understand that if the district wasn't going to do it itself, we have to force them to do policy. That is the power of the school committee. On every significant piece of legislation that had to do with student achievement, she and I have led the way. We didn't follow anybody. We didn't listen to, no, we can't do it. We didn't listen to, not now. We didn't listen to, we have to wait. We led the way. That's what leaders do. And we understood clearly that $41,000 per pupil, which we were spending, we were not getting out of our school system. And this is around Algebra, this is around ELA, this is around meeting students' needs wherever they're at. $41,000 per pupil. At the end of the day, you have to believe like me, one that all kids can achieve, that dreams die with low expectations, and that there's no insignificant moment in a student's life at... in our schools. Every moment matters, and we have to force the adults who have decided that they want to be in the way of excellent instruction and high student achievement for all to do what is necessary, what is just, and what, quite frankly, through a public education is a civil right.
Thank you. I'd like to say that the soft tyranny of low expectations holds as true for superintendents as it does for our students, and that I'd like to keep those high expectations for both superintendents and for students. One thing that I think this question is really asking is about what is good management period, right? Like, how does the school committee manage the superintendent? How does the superintendent manage the principals? How do you have cross-knowledge of all of those jobs? How do you establish, like, what are the metrics for success? What is the definition of the goal? What are the specs? One thing that I truly admire about Member Hudson's performance on the school committee is how fierce her questions are, how specific she has done the work by reading, by asking, by analyzing the... Where the fact of the presentation is. I'd like to follow that specific part of her example there by asking those same kind of fierce questions. And I'd also like to follow my own experience of being a filmmaker, of being a documentary researcher, by finding multiple sources to cross-check, cross... Like, to check the facts. I don't like relying on one person's data. It's only ever going to give you one perspective. I'd like to know what people are saying in schools. I'd like to know what principals experience in their schools. How is their management affecting our students? You can tell this by work at Putnam Avenue versus, say, Rock over the last three years. It's really interesting. Okay, here you go.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Hudson. Again, I'm going to start out by agreeing with Al Bors and saying that when you're talking about oversight over the school committee, that is really the job of the voters. You are the only people who can hold us accountable. And so to that end, there are three things for which I think that you should be looking. First is somebody who understands the problem, and this is something that Ann and Richard here, to my right, do spectacularly well. For example, apparently recently brought up to me the problem of the course sequence at CRLS, and they said, "Well, why don't we publish for students, CPS middle school students, the fact that you can skip some courses at the beginning of CRLS if you've already taken them, like Algebra, for example?" And they posed this as a documentation problem, and this is not a documentation problem. The reason that we don't advertise the fact that you can skip Algebra I in ninth grade if you've already taken it is because we don't want you to. CPS doesn't want you to. If you go to a private middle school, the guidance counselor will browbeat us into making it possible. But it's not a documentation problem, it's a policy problem, and you have to understand that. The second thing you need is somebody who takes action and stands up for their beliefs. You can get elected with big words and then get in and realize, "Oh, shit, this is actually a lot more complicated than I thought," and get all gummed up and get nothing done. You need to be able to understand when you need to push to make things happen. It is rare that the problem is just, "Oh, we need to convene everybody and hug and snug and have a coffee together, and then we'll realize that we all have the same goals." There will be conflict, and you have to be willing to stand up for that when that occurs. This occurred with Algebra. It will occur again with this identification policy, which was publicly voted and publicly posted and not just available to people on the CALA list served. We identify that the goal with the policy is to identify students based on test scores, not just parent identification, and there will be pushback from people who say that tests are imperfect. When that pushback comes, what will you do? Finally, you want... You're looking for somebody who's got some guts. You're going to get flack, right? You cannot say out of one side of your mouth, "We need to do everything that the faculty tell us to do," and out of the other side, say that we are not properly differentiating instruction in the classroom today. We aren't, it's a fact, right? But the faculty won't tell you that. So I'll tell you right now how you can hold me accountable this year. We are this year putting all eighth-grade students through Algebra I. Algebra I, the policy was that we had to offer it, it wasn't that all students have to take it. I think putting all students through it is a spectacularly bad idea, but now we have to disagree and commit and properly staff it such that it is a success.
Okay. And as we move to question three, we're going to start on the candidates' left and move back to the right. Okay. Question three, 1.5 minutes. Helpful to state your name before answering. Our upper schools have a mixed reputation, and data indicates there's a 20% loss of students to private and charter schools during the upper school window. What do you think is going on with our upper schools, and what would you do to address the issue?
So, obviously, one of the issues has been sort of... I mean, the Algebra thing has been one thing, but I think it's emblematic of like other issues that, over the past several years, that we've had, which, at the end of the day, means that people, if they feel like there's a better sort of like, you know, product of education that they can get, especially if they have the means, they're going to send them there. So, in order to combat that, the CPS needs to be able to provide... Be a little more proactive, I think, in terms of taking, you know, modern technologies and modern tools, sort of integrating them in the classroom, and, as mentioned before, with integrating the advantage that we have, which is the local talent across the board in the sciences, arts, and trade, making that process easier. The second thing, I think, is that PPS, I think, is doing, you know, a reasonable job with this. I actually think that with superintendent's search, that the candidates that we have are fairly reasonable. But as far as it goes for getting like educators, I think we hamper the search process by having requirements that, for instance, don't make a lot of sense as far as educational attainment goes, such as forcing people to have master's degrees, waste time and money, and makes it difficult for us to recruit better educators to our system.
What would I do about the upper school drain? So I remember that one hope for the K-8 model that we had in Cambridge that preceded the Innovation Agenda was to stem the flow of families who were leaving during the middle school grades, and that goal was not achieved. Our upper schools are not flourishing, and I think families leave simply because they anticipate that their kids' needs are not going to be met in Cambridge middle schools. So I think we need a review. I think, as one of the other candidates said, I think it was you, Jess, a summit. We need an upper school summit. I think that's a great idea, and I think that that needs to really start with teacher input. I think hearing what our middle school, our upper school teachers have to say, their experience is going to be the ground for what we do next. I would also include in that summit an academic expectations audit among the four schools, between our four upper schools. And lastly, I would look for youth input, students currently in our upper schools, what's their experience? And I would look to those who graduated eighth grade within the past four years, in other words, our high schoolers.
All right. Jess Getz. As an upper school parent, I know firsthand that this reputation is not entirely fair. Our upper schools are not terrible, but there is definitely room for improvement. After infancy, early adolescence is the second fastest phase of human growth and development, psychologically and physically. So there's just no getting around that there are unique challenges at this age, and that is not an excuse for the real behavior and academic issues in our upper schools, but rather, it should inform how we do upper schools. We spent a lot of money, and we built some nice buildings, but a building is not a school. The original Innovation Agenda plan included a community-based wraparound zone, rich out-of-school time opportunities, and curricula based on already established effective best practices, and none of that happened. But I do believe we can help the upper schools by looking to best practices for working with early adolescents. For example, kids this age need to feel deeply connected to their community. They need abundant physical activity and support with untestable skills, so they need a schedule that gives adequate time for advisory and recess, as well as clear lessons on executive functioning. They need the material to connect to their real world. For that, teachers need to be allowed to be creative and less beholden to prefab curricula. They need to be developing safe and smart relationships with technology, so we need to be thoughtful about the use of Chromebooks, including better policies for how they are used during lunch periods and content filtering. They need the opportunity for self-direction, and when possible, they should be allowed to use how to use wind blocks. Logistically, we need to make sure we can actually accommodate every elementary school kid in our upper schools. And we need to acknowledge the poor reputation and confront it.
Thanks. Arjun Jacob Mar. So, when I'm knocking doors and I talk to families and educators about the upper schools, I hear two primary issues. One is behavioral social, and the other is academic. To the first, we have had an increasing number of crisis incidents in upper schools, which affect the learning and well-being not only of dysregulated kids, but of their peers and whole classes. These are attributable to a lot of different factors, but in the interest of time, let's talk about solution. I propose a joint labor management committee to analyze the issue in depth and develop comprehensive standardized protocols for use across the district, both preventative and reactive. We need sufficient social and emotional supports in middle school so that kids who are disengaged don't get dysregulated, and that may mean that we need more than two or three social workers serving an entire middle school general population. But we also need standardized training for our educators in how to respond to dysregulation so that they aren't overwhelmed and they can keep disruptions to a minimum. So here's how to respond to this type of behavior. If it escalates to this level, engage a social worker. To this level, an assistant principal, so on and so forth. We need this to be standardized across the district because right now, the way we manage this is inconsistent from school to school and class to class. So that's part of it. Academically, I think that in the short term, we don't want to disrupt eighth-grade Algebra during implementation. We need this to be successful, and we should resist the urge to chase other shiny objects while we're working on this implementation. Let's do this right. As I said before, I do think once it's implemented, we should look at how it's working and whether we want to move toward a different structure.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Hudson. So this is so common, the move out of middle schools and then often back for high school is so common, it's got a name, it's called the Cambridge Shuffle. But let's talk about why it happens. So late elementary school is where a student... Where it first becomes apparent that not only do students come in with significantly different preparedness and abilities, but also that we fail to close those gaps, and then we blindly promote them up to the next grade level for which they're not prepared, no matter their readiness. I got a text from a mom at Hagerty a couple of days ago who was talking about the middle schools, and she said that she, her older daughter, was at... Working at grade level first, second, and third grade, and fourth and fifth grade, she spent her entire math class at helping teach first and second-grade math to other students. And then she continued to do this through middle school, she got to high school, she was hopelessly lost and behind, and that's why this mom pulled her younger daughter from CPS middle schools. Our middle schools are also rife with... And bottom line there is that a single teacher simply cannot teach to nine-grade levels of readiness in a single classroom. That's not differentiation, that's impossible. Our middle schools are also rife with behavioral issues. The goal is inclusion, but what happens today is you have, you know, kids screaming, standing on desks, and throwing Chromebooks. It's impossible to teach in that environment, and it's near impossible to learn. We need to recognize that, and we need to do something about it. And I'm loath to say that... I'm loath to say all of this because public schools are a public good, and I don't want to see schools segregated by income. But parents are doing what is logically right for their students. They need to make sure that their kids get a great education, and that reality is today, that's not happening at a CPS middle school.
Hi there. My name is Annie Coburn. I think that parents leave middle schools for many reasons, which include safety of their children. As Member Harding mentioned, black folks, they send their kids off to charter schools as well because they don't feel safe either from additional problems like behavior issues or, again, tyranny of low expectations, and they would like something better for their own students, right? So I think that, you know, also, as Jess mentioned, our middle schools are not that bad. They're not actually bad. So one thing that we could do is probably some better PR, maybe a better society. I'd like that. I don't expect it. So what we could also do is improve management at each one of the schools. There was a mark chain at the Putnam Avenue Upper School between, I think it was, like about three years ago, after the assistant principal of CalO then became the principal at Putnam Avenue. Whereas at Rock, you see a different kind of set of outcomes. Rock's outcomes right now are less than what Putnam Avenue's outcomes are, and that's because of the expectations and the management set by the principals at those two different schools. I say this trying not to libel anybody, but there you go.
Low expectations are where dreams go to die. I just want to remind you of that. So the Innovation Agenda came on March 1st, was the vote of the school committee. I was on that school committee, it was a tough vote, but we felt it was the best thing to do. Main issues there were an equitable middle school experiment... Experience for students, both academically and socially, and then an uneven preparation of kids for the eighth grade. That was why we had to change our middle school system. There was a school, the King School at the time, I think the graduating class that year was like fourteen kids, of which there were two boys in the class. It was not working then, and we had to make a change. Let's just be clear. Now what we're doing, once again, the power of the school committee is in policy. Myself and others have led the way to have a review of the Innovation Agenda. Some of it precipitated by the closure of the Kennedy Longfellow, but also because it is our duty to check in and make sure that all things are firing in the right way, including the leadership, including the student achievement, including the social well-being of the students, as well as the facility. As you know, when you come into the middle school space for young people, it's a whole different realm of experience for them. Schools are bigger, they have their social-emotional issues, and they used to tell us that middle school kids were the worst when we were going to make the Innovation Agenda. It's all not true. The oversight rests in the hands of the school committee. We are willing and stepping up, leaders like myself and Elizabeth, to do that job. But ultimately, the main thing is we have to look at where we're going to start sending kids, and do the actual patterns matter where we're getting kids from and sending them to schools with the closure of the Kennedy Longfellow.
Thank you, everybody. This ends the forum. As we thank the candidates for participating, all the great ideas, thank you. And yeah, I'll leave everybody with one thought and a welcome and invitation. Advanced learning, obviously, is a very important issue to many of us in this room and in our parent and caregiver group. It is 100% true that we would love to see more communication and resources from CPS devoted to advanced learning. People may not know, one FTE budgeted for advanced learning for all of CPS, and we know there are so many kids and so many... So many needs in advanced learning, and they also need support. So again, one person budgeted. If you'd like to advocate, think about that. And also, that position was open for much of the last year because the lead teacher for advanced learning, you know, she had a personal reason that she left the job, so that position was not filled. So there was no one advocating for advanced learning in the last year specifically as an official role in CPS. So yes, CALA does try to step up and fill that when we can and provide more communication. So we are a very open parent group. I think you'll find us online, and please join us. We'd love to share as many of our updates as possible. Thank you.
[applause]